Please be aware, tonight's meeting is both video and audio tape. If anybody is going to do either or, please look forward now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written for the June 5th, 2018.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
One more second.
Correspondence. Correspondence dated June 19th, 2018. Office received the monthly reports of the Fire Chief, Ian Surt, for the month ending May 2018. The office also received notice from Priscilla Prowse. She will be resigning for her position at the Highway Department office. She's willing to work with the Highway Surveyor in order to provide a smooth transition. We also, office also received a letter of resignation from Robert Souza, who resigned from the Quaybog Regional School Committee. Town's annual fireworks will be held August 18th, 2018, at Quaybog Regional Middle High School at dusk. Music will begin at 6:30 PM. The office also received notice that on or around June 25th, Abe Martins and Sons Construction will begin work on the Quaybog Street Improvement Project. Plans have to begin with this installation of the water main and will be replaced from intersection to Main Street to the intersection of Billside Out. Replacement of drainage system will follow along with the rehabilitation of street sidewalk surfaces. Office received notice from the Warren Police Department, recently responded to a residence in town in which various drugs were discovered, resulting in charges of possession with intent to distribute heroin, crack cocaine, and other controlled substances. Congratulations to Detective Bondaber and Officer Sissini for their efforts. That is it for correspondence.
Comments?
I have no comments.
Go ahead, too.
This may be just not clear to me. If it is, then ignore it. Does anybody else have any trouble hearing?
Yes.
Could you guys please speak up?
Yeah.
I will try to do so in the future. Throw something out.
Mrs. Laffco, you're up.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to take a second to thank Becky Osirak for her professionalism as REO, and especially in a town where much of the town is divided. We seek truth, honesty, and a town united. So if you've ever worked with Becky or have ever been most of a variety of complicated personalities, please take a minute to say hello or thank her for her job well done. And before I begin, if any of you are unable to hear me, if I'm not clear, if you need me to repeat anything or have questions, please interrupt and let me know. Mr. Mason, I have a question for you. Right before the election, you made a comment that being approved of citizens asking questions of the Board of Selectmen. Did you clarify on that or whatever?
It wasn't a citizen asking a question of a Board of Selectmen. To me, that was more of an attack on a local official or citizen in this room. I didn't think that's where it was meant to happen. There is a process that should be followed in order to do that. And I would do the same in supporting you. If somebody were on a personal attack on you in this office, I would question their behavior.
Well, that's a good point, because that was my next question. A couple of weeks ago, a non-resident mentioned for five minutes and 15 seconds. And I did time it. Somebody said that that was petty. It's not. If you're sitting there for five minutes and 15 seconds, and someone is assaulting you verbally and making up pure lies that aren't even verifiable, and nobody interrupts, and I'd like to know why that is different to you.
In that case, there was no names mentioned. And I did talk to the individual after the meeting, stating that he was very close to where my line was drawn. So up until that point, no names were mentioned. But when he started going into time periods, he was inferring a name. And I'm glad Chairman put it to a stop at that point.
Okay, because I thought he didn't mention these names. But I, so much has gone on, I can't remember off the top of my head.
He may have, but I didn't catch it. I'm sorry if it was.
Just one last question on that topic, though. I appreciate Mr. Richards making an apology the following week. But I wondered why you and Mr. Nardi weren't part of that apology. Did you feel that it wasn't part of the Board's responsibility to apologize for that matter? Or was it just on the chairperson?
Mr. Richards is the chairman. I didn't even know he was going to make that apology, and I'm fine with it.
But you're just not sorry, right?
I didn't say I wasn't sorry. Like I said, I don't think anybody should be brought before this room in this session in that kind of context. I agree with what Mr. Richards did as far as how far to go follow me up. So nothing wrong whatsoever.
That's, that answers the question. Okay, this is for Mr. Richards and to Mr. Mason. Are you aware that Mr. Nardi wrote an email on November 28th, just seven months ago, I have it with me, if you need a copy of it, I'd be happy to pass it up, saying that all employees of the Town of Warren are responsible for their actions, and they should be held accountable for any violation. Do you both think that Mr. Nardi should be fired for his admitted offense of deleting emails in the same way that an officer was fired for an alleged offense, and if not, why?
Say that again, Megan.
Okay. So if we're to go with Mr. Nardi's statement that employees of the Town of Warren are responsible for their actions and should be held accountable for any violation, do you, as the other two peer board members, believe that Mr. Nardi should be held responsible in any way for admitting to deleting his emails, which he's not supposed to do, destroy public records? I know you guys all know that. So, I mean, why not punish each other?
You're asking me if I think somebody should be fired?
Yeah, sure, fired, punished, spoken to. I mean, if you're on the board and you do something wrong, who can hold you accountable, if not each other? I don't understand why I'm not clear. Somebody else has a... You're not getting it? So Mr. Nardi deleted his email. He's not supposed to do that. You fire a police officer because you didn't like the meme, right? So what about Mr. Nardi deleting emails when he's not supposed to? What are you two, what do you think should be done about that? Anything? I'm sorry, it's so confusing.
Well, I have a question for myself.
Okay.
I know my emails are public record. And if I delete them intentionally, I would expect something to happen.
Thank you.
I'm not the judge and jury, though. That's a process that's involved. I can't, I can't attack somebody. I don't have all the facts, right? What I heard when Mr. Nardi said his emails got deleted because of a length of time and an account, I never heard anything about intentional deletion.
Yeah, it's an email, actually. So if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. Because if it's not supposed to be done, then I think that it should be reviewed in the same manner that an officer's alleged misconduct was reviewed and taken action upon. And I think a lot of other people in town think so, too.
Well, let me just say this. One, the Board doesn't have the authority to fire another board member. The Board is, the people that sit on this side of the desk are elected. That's elected by the taxpayers. We do not have that authority to sit here and terminate anybody. And as John said, I am not sitting here trying to get into an argument regarding another individual. I am not, and if anybody else has moral compass except my own.
All right, so I guess you could just kind of do what you want, is what it sounds like. But I just have one last point. Mr. Nardi, I have a picture of you here with me from my video from the evening of 11/20/2016, while you stood watching the police assist your daughter. Is it a conflict of interest to stand over people you can fire while they work on a family matter? And if you're not seeking revenge on the Police Department, which appears to be by public records ever since that day, then why were two parking spaces removed from the Police Department the following morning of the event? And why are you more heavy-handed towards the police than any other department in town?
Well, there's about four questions there, Mrs. Laffco. I'm not going to answer any of them. They've been asked and answered. It's just a waste of our time. That was all discussed back in October, the parking lot issue.
No, it wasn't. You interrupted me and you screened your head off. You never answered my question. Yes, screened it on video. I'll put it on for you tonight, though.
I'm not going to get into it again. These are all old questions. You just want to keep regurgitating the same stuff, okay?
I'd like to know why.
Move on. Move on to something new. I'm not answering anymore.
Okay, fine. Last thing, Mr. Nardi. It's clear you've lost your authority to remain unbiased with the Police Department and have shown repeatedly in public records a personal vendetta since the event of the citation. If we're to have a fear and uncorrupt Board of Selectmen, the only way is for you to step down. We need honest, reputable, and unbiased selectmen in these positions. We need selectmen who will bring the town together and not tear us apart. Selectmen who are focused on what is best for the town and not what is best for them. If you care about the town, step down.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
You as well.
That'll do it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Reed Street. All right, well, I think everybody here is really familiar with this situation. I guess what it comes down to is, what are you going to do about it?
So just to recap a little bit. Couple of weeks ago, Jeff Bog from Time Bond presented his findings of his feasibility study for the engineering solutions for the Reed Street water difficulties. And the recommended solution is Alternative 1A, which is the most expensive but provides the greatest service to the residents of the street. And that costs about $4.4 million, so it's a pretty expensive project. We had a meeting with Royal Development, and I prepared a memo for you. I don't know if you had a chance to look it over. Did you have any comments on this?
It is what it is, Mrs. Kim.
Right.
And there's really no sense in debating it. X amount of dollars to this, or X amount of dollars to that. It's very clear.
So we know what the answers are. And as you said, the question is, what do you want to do about it at this point in time? So I'd like to get your thoughts. If you want to, we can go ahead and apply and determine what kind of assistance the town will be eligible for. And then you can make the decision as to what you want to do. Or you could, you know...
When you say "apply," "apply" for what? Are you talking about applying for grants or going, applying for a loan?
I think it's a combination of both, but we don't know for sure what... If there is any grant assistance available. But there's one program, and in the past, they've had both a grant and a loan component of that program. And so the town, because of its economic status, has been eligible for a significant grant component. But when we met with Mr. Nichols, he was not able to commit to whether there'd be any grant assistance available. So we won't know that until we actually apply. So the worst-case scenario would be 100% loan for about $4.4 million, which would be, have a term of 40 years. So it would sort of lower the monthly, you know, the principal payments. And there'd be a low interest rate attached to that loan because it's a federally assisted program.
The interest rate would be around 5 and 1/4.
It's been, it's been less in the past. He didn't give us...
Yeah, it has been less in the past, but from what I, my conversation with the treasurer today, that that seems to be a figure that she's going to look at. And I think what you have to also realize is, if you take this out for 40 years, the loan payment that the town is responsible for is $285,000. If you do it for 40 years, this four-and-a-half-million-dollar project turns into an $11-million-dollar project. I think everybody in this room doesn't realize that once you borrow the money, there is a cost to borrowing money. And when you're talking borrowing $4.7 million, we are going to pay $6 million in interest over the course of that 40-year loan.
So the program might have a grant component down, and we won't know that until we apply. So if we could get...
Well, I understand that. Even if you get 20%, so instead of $11 million, it's $9 million, there's still, it's an astronomical cost to the town to address this issue.
And as we've discussed before, the two water districts do not have the financial capability to really contribute much to the project.
The only one that's contributed money is the town. Up to this date, the $25,000 that we get this under review.
And that was great, so at least we know now.
You know, what sticks, not only the people involved in Reed Street, but this board in such an uncomfortable position is, you're talking $11 million to rectify a problem for a dozen residents. That is a huge cost. I sympathize it. I would not want to be on the other end of this coin. But the town also has a responsibility to the balance of the taxpayers in town. $11 million is a huge number. And unfortunately, not only is the financial burden, you're talking about two private companies that the town has absolutely nothing to do, nothing to say over, which complicates the matter more, and they don't have the financial resources. So it puts the board in an unfortunate situation of obviously trying to get some help for these people. But where does the board drive along on the cost? So good. Go ahead, Kathy.
As I mentioned before, this is not the only source of funding. Mike McGrath from the US, from the DEP is waiting to hear from the town. He's willing to work with the town to find both grants and loans. Todd Smola and Ian Goby are waiting to hear from the town so the state can step in and help. But they can't do anything until they hear from this board.
The Board has been in contact with Todd Smola and Ian Goby numerous times over the last year.
And specifically asked for assistance? Because I had a conversation with Todd this morning. He said, "There's been some conversation, but there's no, there has not been any specific request for assistance."
No, there has not. There has been conversation.
Why? Been two and a half years.
I'm sorry.
Why wouldn't there be a request for assistance?
Because I think the Board has to make a determination, sir, of actually what direction we're going to go to.
Correct, but you're latching on to the worst case. You just sat here and said, "It's going to cost $11 million."
No, I'm just trying to put out facts.
You don't really know that.
You don't know that.
No, I understand that, sir. But, so it's $11 million or $9 million. I am just trying to get the people in town aware that this is a huge financial burden.
We've been discussing this for two and a half years, sir. No, no town official has sought any assistance from the state in two and a half years. There's grants available. The DEP is willing to help. Nobody solicited those questions. Why? Two and a half years have gone by. We are stuck.
I realize that, sir.
No, you don't realize that.
I understand your frustration, yes, I do.
Well, then, why don't you ask? And have you contacted Mike McGrath?
No, I have not.
At April 10th, you said you would.
Yes, and Mrs. Sarah brought that up, and yes, I will sit there and know. I've been a little bit...
Why? Why not?
I apologize. I did not...
But that's your job.
It's two and a half years.
We've been more than eight years.
We're sick of waiting and discussing it.
We've been discussing this forever.
And why are you painting such a bleak picture about this $9 or $11 million? When I go to buy a house for $250,000, it may cost me $500,000. But I'm not thinking, "Oh, that's a $500,000 house." But you're paying the worst scenario possible.
Because it's my job, sir, to...
But you're not even...
Your job to burn it down is what your job is. It's to paint the black that's painted you can.
So I am just supposed to sit there and coddle, sit there and, okay?
No, you're supposed to ask for help.
That's not an issue.
But you're supposed to go to the officials that have said they will help. You haven't even tried that scenario yet.
The state put this on us. You should be soliciting the state for assistance. The DEP changed this, what is at all?
And that's another issue that has never even been finalized yet.
But do you agree or not agree that he's right? That you should be soliciting the state for assistance? Yes or no?
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay, then I haven't, we've done that yet.
I think the point of the conversation was to getting on agenda tonight is, first, we have to understand, what if the Board just sat there and said, "You know what? This is a private company, two private companies on private land. Somebody has to..." What about the other 5,000 people in town that aren't in this meeting? Are they willing to share the burden of the cost of straightening this out? Don't you think the Board has to have some sort of, some sort of input from those?
We've been saying that for two years, though. That we've had the same conversation over and over again.
And that's what it comes down to, Kathy, is... I think the whole point of getting this on the agenda was to sit there and decide what direction we are going to go in.
So is the Board ready to make a decision tonight?
As far as I'm concerned, no.
We have to make a decision. We've been discussing forever. We need a decision.
I understand that, Kathy. I understand that. But what was the option that, at one time, that the town just sit there and said, "You know what? This is a state problem. Go after the state." The Board didn't cause this problem. The town didn't cause this problem.
But you're making a decision.
Somebody in the town...
But help from the state has to be solicited by you people, not us.
I've done all I can do in talking with the state. They're waiting to hear from you. I can't represent the town on this issue.
No, I understand that. But that's the whole point of the conversation, is where the town wants to go. I understand that the 12 people affected want this taken care of.
More than 12 people.
It's more than 12. Other people can't even sell their houses on that street.
And I understand that, Kathy. I understand it. And what happens if next year, there's another 10 people?
It's possible. It's a time issue.
Yeah, it is possible.
And that's, so don't you think we should end up getting a solution that is amicable to everybody?
So when will that happen, Kathy? What's the timeline for that?
When are you going to start it?
When are you going to contact the state? What are you going to...
I will contact Mike McGrath tomorrow.
Okay, that's DEP. What about putting in a judicial request for assistance to Ian, Ian Goby, Todd Smola, the governor?
That has been done many times over the past...
Can I see copies of that, please? Because what they've told me is not that.
Because like I say, I've only been chair since mayor. This was done by previous people. I am taking them. That's true. They have been in contact. It has been, "Mrs. Goby, when I want Marching Memorial Day Parade."
So we have to...
So can we get copies of the town's requests for assistance?
Pardon me?
Can I get copies of the town's requests for assistance?
Anything that I have, I'd be very willing to share.
Thank you.
That's not a issue.
Because that's not what they're telling me.
But like you say, these other state reps and this and that, that, right, we need to be pushed. They're not going to sit there and, they have, deal with issues like this every single day. But it comes down to, Kathy, is, the point of the conversation tonight was, which direction? Do we go out to the state and say, "You know what? You people caused it. You people are going to pay for it."
So make a decision.
But you know, that's going to be, it could be another year and a half. I don't have any control over that.
When is this part going to make a decision?
And what if that doesn't happen? And the state says, "You know what?"
It's a stone wall. It's a stone wall.
Tonight. You said tonight, and make a decision.
And that's, and what decision would you like me to go? Would you like the Board to...
Make a decision. You just said, "We were here tonight to make a decision." What is your decision?
On what would, would you rather, okay, you have the option of going low-interest loan? Are the other people besides the people in this meeting room tonight willing to bear the burden for a $10 million dollar budget?
And did you ask that question?
The point, the point we're making, you don't know what the options are because you haven't contacted the state. You haven't contacted state reps. You haven't tried to get loans. You don't know. The only one you've presented to us is $11 million, which includes interest. I get that. But the original amount was 4.4. If you take 12 houses, the 12 houses we're talking about is pretty close to $4 million if we have market value. So the, so the base amount would be covered by selling the houses. If those houses are condemned, you're going to lose that. You're going to lose, you want to go 40 years? You're going to lose that tax revenue for 40 years. What's 40 times 40? That's what it's going to come out to.
I understand that. That's another point of discussion. Now, if we, if no action is taken, and for whatever reason, I do not want that section of town to turn into a voided section of town because once people start losing their houses or walking away, or for whatever reason, that's what happens.
It just happens and you're not aware.
That's, that's what the Board has to consider. And then the fact that, well, you know, if you sit there and you do that, like, you're going to pay $3,000 a home just as a ballpark figure. You got 10 homes. That's $30,000 in lost tax revenue.
It's more than that.
Yeah, mine's $5,000.
Okay, so that's $50,000 in tax revenue.
Over 40 years.
But, right, over 40 years. So you're talking about that. And that's the whole point.
He's just making excuses. Excuses have all you do. It's all you do is make excuses.
My personal loss doesn't mean anything. I've got $300,000 invested in my home. You expect me to walk away from it?
No, no, I understand that.
We can't walk away. No one will buy our house.
I understand that. I understand that, ma'am. Mr. Warren.
Mr. Richard, isn't the point of a posted open town meeting so that people who disagree with whatever is posted can come and voice their opinion? So if nobody's here to disagree with what these people are saying, then they're leaving their opinion up to the voted officials, who are you three? So you can't keep pushing this off, saying, "We want people here who disagree," when that's what they voted you for, and it's a posted meeting. If they can't take the time to show up, then they don't get to voice their opinion.
No, I understand that, sir. But we're not going to get 5,000 people in this room to sit there.
But you're not even getting...
But it sits there, it affects every taxpayer in this town.
And that's why you're voting...
That's what you, that's what I think you people are forgetting.
No, we're not forgetting.
We're not forgetting.
That's who's wrong. Because if you guys say, "Let's go with the $11 million," you can't do that on your own. You have to put it to a down vote, right? That's where the 5,000 people come in. But we need a recommendation from you based on facts, based on viable options that you choose from that make financial sense. And so far, you aren't doing that. For two and a half years, no one's putting anything to the town saying, "What do you think about this? What do you think? The selectmen recommend choice B, choice C, whatever it is." None of that has been done. And we can't sell, refinance, rent, and even buy homes for two and a half years.
Sir, I understand that. So let me, let me just give you a scenario. So we go to town meeting, and it's defeated.
And what?
And it's defeated. That the taxpayers say, no, I'm not going to...
Again, you're assuming the worst case. You haven't investigated all the options yet.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, here, for our conversation. If we go to town meeting, and it's defeated, where does that leave you folks up there on Reed Street?
They don't want that option.
No, I'm not a town official. You tell me.
Probably a 12,000 lawsuit against the town.
Yeah, I think that would be the worst thing.
And how do you, when the town has absolutely nothing to do with it?
The town has...
It's a town resident that created this situation.
If I'm not arresting the person, they're not doing it.
What are the time, please?
It's a town resident, former town resident, that created this situation, is it not? The owner of the auto body, whatever the hell it was, thing across the street from me up on the hill. That's who created it. He was a town resident.
And an employee.
I'm assuming a town taxpayer. And so how is that not part of the town's responsibility? Whose is it? That guy? He's dead.
Yes, it is. It's a home loan. It's a private piece of property, sir.
But...
If my, if my well gets contaminated from my neighbor, do you think I'm going to sue the town?
But...
We call...
I have to sue the...
What if you're, what if your well contaminated 12 of your neighbors? What if the town said, "Your water's perfectly fine." And then your neighbors come along and say, "You know what? The EPA just deemed my well contaminated." Where do your neighbors go? Do they go to you?
To the stands.
No, they're going to go to the town. That's a ridiculous stand you're taking. Of course, it's the town's responsibility.
No, I don't disagree with you there, sir.
Well, you can disagree, but...
The town, we went through, as homeowners who built our homes on that street in the last 15 to 20 years, we went through all the permitting processes. We were granted the right permits from the town. The town allowed us to build there, knowing full well that there had been a junkyard up there years ago.
Help them. Do something. Don't keep understanding.
It is part of the town's responsibility.
Send letters. Why don't all these people get information research?
And the knowledge that the town had... And the knowledge that the town had was years before any of us bought or built houses. And we have proof of that online, so if you wanna say that's not true, I mean, I will forward this to you.
Contact the meeting at the-
Well, I know that Anne Goby, Todd Smolow, and the others, that you've been involved in-
Congress Benio, yep.
And I'll reach out to them.
And when will you do that?
Next week.
Okay, thank you.
The DEP is gonna help some of these other towns, they're not helping us.
Well, they're not asking for help either. Mr. Gossen, what did you say, you're trying to help?
They asked me to give you a list of the contacts, who they've been talking with, and I will try to contact them within the next week.
That'll be a great start.
We've been contacting Elizabeth Warren.
Whoever you've been dealing with, if you give me a full list, I'll try to reach out and see if I can get them to reach out.
We're asking.
Two and a half years later, somebody's gonna try to reach out to contact you.
I've only been on the board for a couple of weeks.
I understand, yeah. The EPA paid for the one in New Hampshire, because no one else could. The federal government stepped in in a state of emergency for the same type of contaminant that we had.
For 18 holes.
Personally, I believe it's a state problem, because the state came in here and supposedly cleaned it up, right? I don't know any more than that right now, but I'll reach out and I'll try to find out information and get back to you.
So can I get asked, when do you think you'll be able to make a decision about the direction we're heading in? I'd like a timeline.
Well, obviously, I don't want one member of the three members. So the board has to have some sort of conversation, because no matter which road you go down, it is completely opposite. So if the vast majority in town wanna take a loan out, I don't have an issue with that. But I have to have a sense of feeling, whether the bulk of the taxpayers or the bulk of all the residents who are going to, you're asking to pay for this problem, are willing to do that.
How do you propose to get a sense? How do you propose to get a sense with number one? You say you need that, but how are you gonna get that?
Mr. Gossen?
The thing is, let's keep the sarcasm to it, okay? I hear a little soundbite to that. I don't know, I guess what you expect the board to do tonight, to make a decision, either we're gonna take a loan, or we're gonna say, we're not gonna take a loan. Is that what you, you don't want us to make that decision?
I'm pretty certain that if you go to the town as a whole and say, are you okay with your taxes going up 11 million bucks? They're gonna say no, nobody's gonna wanna do that. The point we're trying to make is, none of you have tried to get options, viable options, and what the cost of those are. Can we get loans, can we get grants, can we get whatever assistance from EPA?
We can get a loan tomorrow.
Okay.
If we want to go down that road, we're gonna have good no shit.
But you're not answering grants, you're not answering assistance from EPA, DEP, all of those other things. If you put that all in a pile, the loan might be 3 million, or 2 and a half million, or 5 million. And if you then go to the town and say, we have all this, whatever it is, $7 million of assistance, but we still need 4 and a half million from the town. I think most people that I've met in this town would be sympathetic enough to say, yeah, okay, we can deal with that. I mean, I don't want people to be, you know, lose their homes, blah, blah, blah. If you go to them and just with one option, say, here's the worst case, 11 million, what do you wanna do? Yes or no? That's what you're proposing, you're gonna say, yes or no? 11 million or nothing? They're gonna say nothing, I would say nothing, 'cause I would look at it and say, you haven't done any homework. And you haven't, and that's what we're complaining about. Two and a half years into this project, and you guys don't know what to do yet. And you've been told by this woman for two and a half years, who to contact, what to say to them when you contact them. I've seen the emails, you can't ignore this anymore. People are now at a point where they're not gonna accept what you guys are putting out. And I know not all of you that in office the same amount of time, but hey, suck it up, you guys are the selectmen now, so.
And that's the whole reason why we put this on the agenda, to get going, and we have to pick a role, is what we're going. And that's, Kathy, you would agree with me. We can't go down with four different options. We have to make the decision as a town to sit there and say, listen, here is option A, here is option B, and option C, we're not gonna do anything. Because it's two private companies on private property, and this and that. The board, the town, is in every legal option to sit there and just throw their hands up, we are trying not to do that. We understand. Me as a taxpayer would sit there and do the same thing, I have sympathy.
But what are you collecting our taxes for?
Our property is worthless.
What are we paying taxes for? You're saying us to walk away from our property, 'cause you're not gonna do anything? Then what are we paying taxes for?
You're putting words in my mouth, sir. I am just saying, that is one of the three options that has been thrown up to me by people in town. Why should I pay for somebody issue? I have to address that as a board member, I understand the position, just like I understand your position. But there are some people in town that do not wanna pay to fix your problem.
So far, those people have been winning.
That's the sad reality.
They've been winning.
We didn't create the problem.
I understand that, and they understand that. But somebody will come up and say, hey, when my roof leaks, I don't go to the town to have them fix it.
Completely different situation.
Because when your roof leaks, it has somebody fix it, sell your house.
I understand that, but people, I'm just telling you what the board hears, one at a time, ma'am. The board hears all these comments. Now unfortunately, most of the people don't wanna come and sit on camera and give their opinion. I applaud you people for doing that, that's not the issue. But you have to understand that in this room right now, everybody in this room is on the same page. We understand that. But there are a lot of people out there that aren't gonna agree with what goes on in this room. And the board has to take that into consideration.
But they won't agree to that because they don't have the information that we've gathered for two and a half years. So if you are presenting the option to them, it's $11 million to fix this, and you're not saying, well, we could get some grants, we could get some help from EPA, then yeah, I understand, people would say that. But if you're not presenting it to them, and I can only ask that you please do that if people come up to you and say that, and don't just quote $11 million, then I think people would be more reasonable about it. Can I ask a question of Mr. Scanlon?
Sure.
Are there ways to facilitate finding out what the grants are, how much the grants might be, what the assistance might be? I know you're gonna contact senators and EPA or whatever. Can we, like in a reasonable amount of time, say, three, four, five weeks, say, I found out this, you found out that, you found, whatever, and say, here are some of the options that would cut into the 11 million, if that's what the real figure is?
Well, what I would suggest is maybe sort of a two-pronged approach. Mr. Nathan is volunteer to contact the state senators and reps to see if there are any grant programs available. And in the meantime, if the board would approve, I could start the rural development application. And then I think in short order, we would find out at least one program, what that cost would be in terms of a grant, of a loan and interest rate. So at least we have a starting point to work from, and then if there are other grant programs that are available, we could, you know, pick and choose perhaps which would be the most favorable.
Can I ask what you mean by short order?
Probably takes about four weeks or so to submit the application.
Which is kinda what I was saying, so in three, four, or five weeks?
And then it might take them four to six weeks to do it.
I'm not asking for our date. And so are you comfortable, since you're the one that offered, that you could contact the people that Kathy's talking about, and I'm pretty sure you would offer your assistance, to try to get whatever help they think they could offer? Is that in a four-week period?
I can't force them to give me an answer. I can't force them to give me an answer, but I can't reach out to contact them.
Could you be able to contact them, ask them the question?
Surely so.
Okay, so in four weeks, you'd have some, approximately, some kind of an answer. You would either have an answer or know that they aren't answering you. So in the net, two selectmen meetings from now?
We're meeting on the- We're meeting on the 10th and the 24th of July, those are our next meeting dates.
Okay, so by the 24th of July, could we try to have some-
I don't know if we have an answer from rural development that quickly.
I understand, we tried to do that.
How about we tentatively put it on the agenda for the 24th?
That's fine, that doesn't really apply.
You know what's obvious to me, Mr. Richards, is that you did your homework for the negative side of this story. $4.2 million is gonna cost 11 or 12 million, and by the way, it's at 5% now, that's what he said. But two years ago, it was probably at 3%, and a year from now, it'll probably be at 7%. You keep dragging your feet. But you do all the negative homework, boy, you cut that down path. You knew exactly what that percentage rate was gonna be.
I would take acceptance of that, sir. I spent time at the treasurer's office today, so I would have information to rely, to pass on to the people that were here.
Two and a half years ago, you should've done that.
Sir, I've only been chair since May. So you wanna start pointing fingers, you pointed somebody.
Just to chime in a couple of things, Mr. Richards, you know, I've been here longest, out of the three members, Kathy, you know, gone back and forth. You know, it's great that John's gonna reach out, but I've had a conversation with Lieutenant Governor, Todd Smolow, Anne Goby. They're not gonna commit anything until we make a decision. Once we tell Bill what to do, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, once we give him the go-ahead, the money that could potentially be there will be shown. It's not gonna be there if Bill just starts to do something in rural development right now, and we're not really committed to it. The state wants us to commit to something, the town, and then they'll commit their resources. And I think that's kinda why we're here, to see three options, see what is viable. My personal opinion, we've had, you know, planning board, the two water departments, there's a lot of logistics that are involved with this. It's not that we don't wanna help, but maybe we should make a decision as to what option do we want Bill to proceed? So then if we call the lieutenant governor, Anne Goby, Todd, say, hey, this is what we're looking at. I think the commitment from them would be more reassuring.
Absolutely.
They're just not gonna listen to you if we don't have solid pavements to travel on, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And that's the problem that we're having. So I think we should either look to say, hey, Bill, work on this, and let's commit to that. It would still have to go before the residents. But if it goes before the residents, and we know what our options are, and we know what the grant funding is, the lesser the amount of money that we're gonna have to possibly put before the taxpayers, is a much better, it's much easier for residents to understand that and to vote, you know, consciously on that, than, hey, it could be this. You know, they don't want uncertainty, they wanna know exactly what it's gonna be. I mean, I'm not opposed to choosing something and moving forward with that, but it still would ultimately have to go before the residents.
So if we pick the most, was 4.4 the most expensive option?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if we pick that one, and we don't get sufficient funding so that a supplementary loan could fund the entire project, are we locked into that with the state? Or can we say, you know what, we're gonna go back to option two, or, you know?
My personal opinion, Bill, correct me again if I'm wrong, once we commit to something, I think we need to stick with it. Changing midstream could hurt us.
Even if you're gonna charge less money, they're still gonna hold you to it.
Changing, picking another option, I think, could hurt us, 'cause we're committing to one option.
I think you should really pick an option, I think it makes it more straightforward as you're going to go.
The state wants us to be certain of this.
And it has to do with the engineering plan, too, there are different engineering plans for each option.
The other consideration is that one of the systems, whichever one takes ownership of the materials, then has to maintain that. So that cost gets spread out among the ratepayers, probably through some sort of a rate increase. So there has to be some agreement on the water supplier to in fact absorb that cost, that operation maintenance cost of the new facilities.
And that was the whole point of getting on the agenda, to hash this out. That's why we're here tonight. I know you people have had it up to here with the situation. I get it, but I can't change what's been done in the past. I can't go back two years and make somebody do something missing it. There's nothing I can do except going forward. The whole purpose of getting on the meeting, I knew it was gonna be a little contentious. I've been around long enough to realize that, but that's the only way you get results. But the board has to pick the option of what we have to do. And that has to be a decision made by the three board members, then you pick it and you stick with it. That's why we are here, not to sit there and be, sit there and have be accused of, I went in to get information. I am not sitting here looking for the gloom and doom scenario. But when you come in there, everybody thinks about, oh, we're borrowing 4 and a half. You have to consider what the term of the loan is gonna be. You're borrowing 4 and a half, but you're paying back 10. That is a valid point that has to be explained to the people.
But you gave us, we didn't give us numbers about the cheapest option, or the next cheapest option.
Because that was-
That's what people are complaining about, you gave us only the most expensive one.
Because that was the choice of what the town planner, after going to the meeting with Kathy, that's why the board sent on our behalf to Mr. Scanlon, because I think he would take much more out of the meeting than I know I would. He comes back, he's got an education, he can sit there and explain it. This is a choice that they have made. That's why I went and asked the facts and figures on this choice. What do I wanna get facts and figures on something we're not gonna end up?
Because maybe you don't agree with him. He, no offense, but you could be wrong, right? I mean, what if there's, I don't remember how many there were, one, two, three, right? Here's the cheapest, the most expensive, one in the middle. And the three of you with his input say, we know we won't get the town to approve 11 million. We might get the town to approve 6 million. We're pretty sure we can get the town to approve 3 million.
But if you're not gonna address the problem and take care of this, and once is for all-
Now you're talking about something different, now you have other parameters that you're also not discussing. All you said when you came in here was 4.4, 11 million, I can't get the town to approve that, that's all we heard.
And that's also for fire protection, which we currently don't have right now anyway.
I understand that, that's why this option was the choice. So again, you have to, just like Mr. Nardio said, you have to pick one. You can't go in and say, well, we'll get this, or we can't get, we'll go this one, or if you can't get that, we'll go this one. You have to go in looking like we know what you're talking about, and say, here's a-
So have you guys picked one? Have you picked them all, is that a done deal?
No, it hasn't. I mean, we have our opinions.
Okay, so then you're still considering our-
Right, we are going off of the recommendation after all the meetings and from the town planner. This is the best option to address this problem.
In his opinion, but that's not his decision, that's your decision.
And when will that vote happen?
And so you need to consider not just the engineering option, not just, God forbid, this fire. I would personally be in favor of the fire retardation thing, but you have to consider that, you have to consider the people that are essentially have worthless homes now, and you have to consider the indecom. Like can we have an option that goes and services the Reed Street people, but at some later date could be extended down to the elementary school? Or gets to the end of Reed Street, and maybe you put the fire stuff in later? That's what you guys should be deciding. He can, you can take his recommendation, I'm fine with that, I'm sure it's probably as sensible, if not more sensible, than the other two. But what we're hearing is you haven't talked about, considered any of the other ones. You're only going on his recommendation. And if that's the right thing to do, then just say it, we've decided that we're gonna go for the most. But don't present it at the town like, you know, it's gonna cost 11 million, I can't imagine you people are gonna wanna do it, you know? You gotta say, hey, we did this because of Reed Street, we did it because of the elementary school, we did it because of other houses that may be contaminated in the future, and maybe some other stuff.
That's why we're going, what my opinion is, to go with the recommendation of Mrs. Scanlon. It's the best option, it cures the most, and it gives us more options for future expansion.
Okay, that's fine, and if you'd have said that at the beginning of the meeting, maybe we would've gotten past a lot of this. You didn't say that, and you implied that you didn't say that to the rest of the town, because they just, well, I'm not, why don't, my roof is leaking, and I'm not getting any assistance, why should I give these people any money?
But that's the mentality that is out there, sir, you have to understand that. That not everybody is gonna climb on board to sit there and support you people, no matter if you lose your house and everything. That's a sad reality of it.
But we need to have, all we need is a majority, we don't need everybody to agree with that.
That's right.
Right.
Kathy.
But if, if people are coming to you and saying, so what are we doing about Reed Street? And you go, that's gonna cost eleven million dollars. Your tax is gonna go up in tax.
But see, you're assuming, I have not had one conversation without that since this morning. You are the first people that I have...
You told us you had conversations with people.
Sir, sir, let me finish, please. I had a conversation with the treasurer this morning in anticipation of this meeting. So there has no, been no conversation with any other person besides the people in this room that you're saying, I'm going around town saying, hey, folks, we wanna go to Reed Street.
You said it. You said it.
You said that.
Roll the tape. You said it.
It's videotaped, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll roll the tape, and I'll show you that. You said it.
You said it.
But whatever. So, okay, so you, are you, do you have enough information, or he's gonna contact people, you're gonna contact people, and you guys are gonna make a determination at some point? Can we wait until we see what those answers are? Right? You're not gonna just make a decision without that information?
Any decision that is made is made in public, sir.
Sorry?
Any decision that the board made is made in public.
Okay.
We don't meet behind closed doors, do sit there and say, we're gonna take Reed Street. So any, any conversation regarding this issue takes place in a public forum.
Would it be in a selectmen's meeting, or...?
Even a selectmen's meeting is not on a Tuesday, and we are discussing it. It will be posted on the board, and anybody in the brother is welcome at that meeting. Go ahead, Kathy.
Couple of points. First of all, John, when, well, I don't know, ask the board. Is it possible to get everyone involved, including state reps, someone from the governor's office, someone from D E P, to sit down and go over all the options with you and just make a decision at that point, having everyone's input simultaneously?
I already have an opinion. It doesn't necessarily speak for the rest of the town's people. But if we're gonna do something, I think we should bite the bullet and do what needs to be done, which includes Adams firefighting stuff and stuff like that. I can't vote money for the rest of the town. That would have to go up to the floor. But I already have an opinion. If I was to proceed, how I would proceed.
That doesn't answer my question. I was like, do, should we have all the state reps, members of D E P, everyone who can assist the town in finding funding, come together in a meeting all at once and just hash this out?
It would be a good idea. I don't think you'll, I mean, we can reach out, see if it can happen.
Is that something you could do?
I don't think it will happen, but I can reach out and ask.
Will you contact people? Okay, thank you.
Even more than one at a time would be good.
Yeah, if we could get at least a group of people together to go over all the options and to see what kind of funding is available. Secondly...
You'll get me the list, Kathy.
I will. I will send that out tomorrow. Secondly, a couple of years ago, Mr. Nardi, you had said that you would be willing to, this is when you were the chairman, have a special town meeting, if necessary, in order to bring us to vote. And so I'm still hoping we'll be able to do that this fall. And I urge the board to move forward as quickly as possible in making decisions, so I'm...
We'll have a special. We're always gonna have a special this fall. I mean, if Bill is saying four to six weeks or something like that, if we had some kind of a direction by the end of August, we could tentatively, we could tentatively have it on, you know, as long as it's on the warrant. It could be something that is brought to a town, whether it's a non-binding, and then it becomes a binding question in May. Because, you know, I generally don't personally like to do them like that, because the attendance is low. You'd probably wanna put something, that's a large thing to present to the town. You should probably have done it in annual. Maybe it's a non-binding question in November and a binding question in, in May to move forward.
But can we kind of have that as a goal, to make that happen?
I was going to mention that, yeah. You should probably consider that.
And secondly, my final point. When I moved to this town fifteen years ago from a large city, I was impressed on the friendliness and healthiness and consideration of the people in this town. I wasn't used to that living in the city. And I used to joke with my colleagues back in the city, saying, you know, there's no such thing as stopping in for a loaf of bread for two seconds, because you gotta stop and chat to everybody in the store and with the clerks. And, you know, it takes ten or fifteen minutes just to get a loaf of bread. But that's the way this town is. People look after each other. And I really think if it's presented the right way to the townsfolk at a town meeting, that the majority will be in support of this. You know, this is a huge burden, not on just those of us that are affected now, but on our street. No one else can sell homes on our street. There are other people on our street who's, who do have dioxin in their wells, but it's, you know, like three one-hundredths of a part per billion below the threshold, so they don't get bottled water. They buy their bottled water, because they don't dare drink the water. But there, so there are people who are cloaks, not just the twelve of us on the street.
And if the state, D E P lowers the limit yet again, all of a sudden you have another whole slew of residents whose walls are contaminated. And so this doesn't end with us. It shouldn't be viewed as just us twelve people in trouble.
And as you alluded to earlier, ten years from now, this is gonna be a blighted neighborhood. None of us can afford to make repairs on our homes. We can't look after our property. We all invested in this property as part of our retirement nest egg. So that when we were ready to retire, and most of us have retired, we would sell the property and move into something smaller, something more manageable. We can't, we can't maintain our properties, you know? And this is going to be a huge blight and a huge problem for the town ten years from now.
And Kathy, that's why, I cannot, like I said, please let me reiterate again. I can't change what happened or didn't happen in the past two and a half years. There's nothing me, you, or anybody in this room can do to change that. The only thing we can do is to move forward from this meeting. That's why this meeting was posted. That's why this meeting was set up to address the situation, so everybody here can give their opinion, and the board will move forward from this day on. But I'm not gonna sit here, like I said, there's nothing I can do to change the past. The past is gone. We have to move forward.
We need to move it.
And we have to move it, yes. That's why it is on the agenda tonight. That's why we're having this very open discussion.
So on January, I mean, July twenty-fourth...
July twenty-fourth, hopefully you will have, you will have the...
I'm jumping out.
Opinions and some more information, obviously, from what John and myself and anybody else we will have on that day. Whether we will have the information from Mr. Scanlon's and that will wait. Have to wait for this.
Are you prepared to make a decision on which option you're going to select?
Like I say, I, yeah, I don't have a problem, but like I say, this is a three-member board, so I think we...
Well, Mr. Nathan's already pretty much decided what he would vote. You don't have a problem, so...
Like I say, the whole, the point of, of this whole meeting was to, you know, we have three paths. Either walk away, do nothing, take a loan out, or a loan combination. First of all, like everybody in this room agrees with, we have to pick one. We can't go down three. We can't go down halfway. We have to make a decision. That's the point of having this very open discussion tonight. Which way is everybody here and everybody concerned most comfortable with doing? Obviously, if we have the option of getting some sort of grant money, we don't ever turn down when somebody's giving us money. And if that offsets the cost, so it covers twenty-five percent. And it's twenty-five percent less the taxpayers in this town have to do it. That's an option. Otherwise, I am simply, you know, you're sitting there demeaning me because I sit there and give you folks facts. This is what I wanted to come to the meeting, to make sure that you are gonna express your opinion, but I have to, as a responsibility as a board member, to sit there and say, you people have to realize, we are borrowing this amount, but we are paying back this amount. That has never been brought up, that you, you know, four and a half million dollars is a lot easier as well than ten million dollars. But you have to consider that, because this might be the option that the board chooses to go down. So now we end up having to, we obviously got the support of the people in this room. But I think finance has to weigh in on this. These are the people that sit there and make the budgets. What are their opinion on it? Which way would they perceive this going? There's a lot of questions that by the twenty-fourth of July, we shouldn't be able to answer the questions from the internal people. Finance's position, obviously, the board members will pipe in along with myself, and will make a determination going forward on that day where we go.
One more thing, and then I'll shut up. As long as that decision is made, not just from the most expensive option, that's all we're asking. Like, if, so you're saying we all approve of that. We don't necessarily approve of the four point four million. If the four point, if the lesser, the yellow they are, two point three, whatever. If that gets, if that addresses most of Reed Street, and we have to wait for the other stuff, that might be an option that we would like, not everybody, but we might. So if, if our stance of the town feeling is that the four point four million dollar option doesn't have a ghost of a chance to get through, then you know what? We're not gonna, we don't want that. We need something to happen, even if it's marginal or temporary, whatever you wanna call it.
As much as we like this one, we will accept this one.
As long as you get water, yeah.
But see, the board looks at it as, if you're gonna do something, let's do it right.
Exactly.
As long as, as long as you're gonna do it.
But if you're gonna do it right, that benefits further than just us. That benefits fire, that benefits the rest of Reed Street and so forth.
I understand, sir.
So that one and a half million dollar extra burden shouldn't be focused on Reed Street residents. That's, that's your decision to go firefighting. We don't have firefighting now. I feel perfectly safe in our homes. All our homes are new. They're all hardwired smoke detectors. We've got a water tank right there. If, if, for some reason there were a fire, I mean, it's not like it's not available. But we're, we're paying one and a half million dollars difference for fire protection. And I know for a fact that probably three-quarters of that is just the, just the electric lines that they have to run three phases up to that water tank. It's a huge cost for the utility to come in and do that.
But as long as the...
And that's required in order to have fire protection.
As long as all the options are considered equitably. They just don't want us to focus on the most expensive one and then have, you know...
No, that was the only thing, that I went in nuts, so I could sit there, and if somebody says, well, what is this gonna cost? I don't sit there and say, I don't know.
Well, but you should, because unless you know all the options, you should say...
I mean, I can, in five minutes, with Condon, say, Don, what's, what's the interest in the loan rate on two and a half million? I could get that answer in five minutes. I just went with the option that, what was addressed.
And you should say, it's your car screen here and here.
And that's, that's, like I say, that, that'll take five minutes of a conversation.
What's our tax base? How many residents pay taxes in the town?
From what I understand, there's like twenty-four hundred plus or minus tax bills that go over the... Mr. Nick, now for quiet.
Can I ask a question? How much input and how much support are you getting from both water districts?
Zero.
And so a letter from them or correspondence from them to support what you're trying to do? You can't get that out of them?
Oh, we can get the support. We can't get any financial assistance. West Warren doesn't have the financial to do much of anything. Warren is now, they are in a little bit better shape, but they are also in a position right now, if anybody that has Warren Water, they have discoloration issues. They are looking at a loan through them to fix it of a couple million dollars. So they are in no position.
They're willing to work with the town if the town moves forward.
Right. They'll say, okay, you can, you can use our water, but we have no financial assistance. And one of the things that was brought up to me today, that if we tie into the water, the Warren Water situation, you live in West Warren, besides the chemicals, West Warren Water is very good. Warren Water is not. So if we end up taking that system and tying it into the West Warren, are we gonna end up bringing the brown water into the West Warren? Those are all little things that have to be worked out before anybody can commit to anything. Because if we sit there and say, okay, everything's going forward. We got the financing, this and that. We're gonna hook up to West Warren. Now all of a sudden, the first time you get water on, you got brown water. Now we have another...
That's a finer product.
A comparison.
Is it undrinkable? Is it not potable?
It's potable.
Right.
It's gonna look good.
But like you said, right, you can't do laundry in it. Most people take their laundry and go down to one of the laundromats. But, but that was the whole point, and... You know, I, I encourage people to, if people know me, I'd rather people come up and say what's on their mind. That's the whole point of this meeting, sir. What was not to sit here and get into, you have to understand that this is, is a decision that is very costly, and is gonna affect everybody one way or the other, because it's gonna affect the public. This has to be talked about and done in the best interests of anybody. That was the whole purpose of putting everybody in this room tonight. On the twenty-fourth, we will have what answers we can at that time. Last question, sir.
Could I make one more suggestion?
Go ahead.
Presenting this option, whether it be six million or eleven million, that either the finance board or tax assessor's office can break that down into what would the additional quarterly payment be per resident, per taxpayer? Eleven million dollars is a daunting number to anyone, but thirty-seven fifty a quarter.
Over forty-year loan, the cost to the town will be about two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars that the town has to end up paying back every year. So basically, you take the money, tax numbers divided, and that's what you're getting. It's not rocket science. But that's where we are. You know, it's an unfortunate situation, and like I say, unfortunately, as much as it's a town issue, in our reality, it isn't a town issue, because there's two private companies on private land, and people have to understand.
The private companies are not causing the contamination. You gotta stop saying that.
But they're the ones that, that have the responsibility or the, the only ones that can fix it. We don't own the water departments. We can't go down and order anybody to do anything.
But they won't fix it.
Right. They don't have the financial capability of doing it. So now the, the town and the board has to step in.
The town stepped in once before with the Heritage Village.
Yep.
So it's, there's a precedent already being, that has already been set.
But from what I understand, I know there's been, we have two, two loans out now that, one of them isn't being paid till twenty forty-six, and the other one, twenty fifty-one. There we have two outstanding loans right now, one for the highway line, one for the sewer project on South Street. And we have done things in the past. I'll get to you in a second, Marilyn. Done things in the past where we have been like the cosigner, and we have taken on it as a cosign, and those loans have been paid off. But those were paid by, completely by the people that borrowed the money. Not, didn't affect any other taxpayer in town. Just one of the parks that we ended up doing, the same situation. The board stepped in and says, we have to help these people, even though we have no responsibility. We can't leave these people out in the cold. We ended up getting money on their behalf, and they paid the town back. That's not an issue. But like I say, we have one twenty forty-six, another one twenty fifty-one, and we still have two major projects that we've done that we are still gonna pay for another twenty years. Go ahead, Marilyn.
No, I just was gonna say that they paid themselves.
Right. So that's where we are. Like I say, I welcome the conversation. I have thick skin, so I can sit there, but we will, that's the whole point of getting forward. This board has had enough, just like you are, it's been frustrating for two years.
But you're not personally affected by it like we are.
I understand that.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I did receive two emails from residents from Reed Street, properties that are affected, and they echoed the sentiments of the people that are here tonight. So that'll just go into the record.
Yeah, you would assume that, that would be... So if that's it, I guess we'll see you on the twenty-fourth. So if that's it, I guess we'll see you on the 24th. Okay, folks, settle down. Okay, number eight gentleman. Discussion on dispatch, vote expected interviewable agreement, memorandum of understanding. As everybody knows, the town has made the decision to regionalize with Ruckman. The idea is just to finalize the paperwork.
Hey, can we get, can we get some conversations going here, folks? Can they please be quiet? Oh, you're dirty. Thank you.
Are you done? Again, I repeat, we're here to vote on a regionalization. We had two public meetings. One of them, we had a gentleman from Finance and John Nathan's wife here, that nobody else chose to attend. We had another one at the Senior Senate this past weekend that did, was very, very sparsely attended. So there is no more discussion. We are here to sign a missful agreement and a memorandum of understanding. I need a motion.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, I really can't hear you.
We are here to discuss, and I'm requesting a motion to sign a memorandum of in, excuse me, understanding between Ruckman and Warren to regionalize dispatch. So we have a motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into a memorandum of understanding of the regionalization of the dispatch services.
Here, a second.
Second, Nick.
All right, David. All right, let's do it. Do you have a second motion, Mr. Chairman?
The IMA.
Need a motion on the IMA.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to sign the IMA dispatch center.
Second.
Take chief, chief, you're upset.
Yeah, thank you.
Board of assessors.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is just on to bring you up to date after the last meeting that was held in, oh, May, early May before the town meeting. At that time, we discussed the board in its entirety. As of now, there are three assessors. Two, one is already qualified from her past assessor job in another town. And the other two assessors, including myself, are already online and working forward the certification to be completed before the end of July. So you'll have three assessors certified. Sitting next to me is Rachel County. Rachel is also certified and working on other certifications. So as of now, you have a board that is still moving forward and learning, all right? Mary Lou also has handed in her retirement. Many of you may know about it, some of you may not. It'll be July 2nd, according to the memo, uh, 12, excuse me, according to the memo that we received and signed off on, and you should probably have a copy of it by now.
We don't.
You don't, and you will. I'll make sure you have one tomorrow. And also with that, we're going to advertise beginning next week for a certified clerk, assessor's clerk, part-time. That was spoke of at the meeting in May, right here in the, in this room with the other board heads. Okay, this was prior to the town meeting again. It's been cut from full-time to part-time at this time. We're going to advertise, as I said, next week, simply because Rachel leaves in August to go to school and do math. Assessors education. We'll have no one in the office. We're building up to the time when we're looking forward to other tax assessments and other, other business that is coming fast toward which the assessor's office. We have our contacts out in Springfield. One woman is assigned to many towns. She is a call person all the time. Rachel's been involved with her. I've called her a couple times with questions. We'd like to get that person on board before the middle of July or earlier. That way, that person and hopefully that has background will be able to move forward with the rest of us while Rachel's out. When Rachel comes back and assumes the assistant assessor's position that Mary Lou's leaving, there will be that assistant. We have had an assistant in that office for over 17 years. Now we have none. And as I said, we will be applying, we were putting out that flyer, now looking for one for a part-time position.
How many hours?
How many hours? You gave, it was 24, we're looking for, it was 20, I'm sorry. 19 hours. Okay? That's the start. And in that conversation again, that I spoke about twice, we will go into the floor and we will be going to Finance. Make that position full-time. We're gonna ask the town to go back to where it was full-time in November, if we have a, if we have another town meeting at that time especially. I'd like Rachel now just to fill in on what's transpired with the new system that's gonna reflect the whole town and be open to everybody in this town, including yourselves.
Well, I had a meeting today with CIA, which is our mapping company. There's a vast amount of technology, new technology that I can utilize now and shortly in the future. It's gonna require shopping to get things going, but it's going to allow access of the public or internal departments to be able to view updated information. Literally, a transfer happens on a sample property, you can go online and see that instantly on our website. You can call a parcel and know the current owner, duty. Currently, it's at least a year back. We can attach permits, we can attach anything relevant to that property. Some of this stuff is not available to the public. Some it's, you can attach to the property, but it's behind doors, so it'd be for internal use only. But there's a lot of new technologies. Mapping can now accept changes on a monthly basis, or as often as I want, the more regular we guys send things up there, the more frequent we can get it and updated. There are certain changes that cannot take place until January 1st. That's just the way it is for certain things that cannot do. But at least a lot of things I can now get a lot more current for our other departments, Building Department, other people can look and see the current owner can proceed forward without needing to put a request to us. We're looking at all data. There's just a lot of things that I'm finding in there that need to be done, need to be changed. I'm learning a lot, there's gonna be a lot to learn. Staffing is critical. I need the help. I, I wanna get somebody in their hood and have the adequate coverage that we need. Up and down, having that department, obviously, every department's gonna have busy times and slow times. That's just the nature of any business. So I definitely think that increasing the hours to a full-time status is gonna be something that we really do go back to. Now we're definitely in a position seeing what needs to be done and what hasn't been given up.
The plan is to start off, advertise at the part-time.
Right, yes, sir.
Put it in the file, actually put an article on the file to move it back to full-time with Finance's support and that.
Exactly the way we had this discussion, yes. Mr. Nick?
My question, it was the same as you guys, is that this is already a budgeted position? It's not an additional?
No, it's already a position there.
It's already in the budget.
Was it, was it budgeted at full or part-time this past year? The money was moved out of
You guys, you guys changed it to 19, it's always been a position 28.
On that side, the discussion, the discussion with Finance, it was changed from full-time to part-time. And the option was left in conversation, to go back to full-time. The biggest thing you guys want, and everybody else in town wants, is transparency. Well, with the transition of the new people, with the training that's being offered and the technology that now Rachel have and the board will have, the town's gonna have more transparency. Planning, the Building Department, Mr. Keel, every act, as Rachel said, every board will be able to get into a certain phase of that, of that system, even the townspeople. In that way, we're more transparent to you. Many people follow, you gotta figure out what the hell your taxes are based on, while no one knows it's last year, it's not this year, the dates. So people are gonna be able to have that and be able to look at things.
It's gonna be a lot more easier to come with the changes that I am looking to implement and, and bring to this department.
That's it.
These are planning for the whole, the whole building, not just our department.
Well, obviously, you have the money and the budget. We'll get you part-time.
We won't go there now. We'll, we'll be discussing with everybody on it, but, you know, that's, we'll be transparent about it and bring it right up to everybody, so thank, thank you.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, request a contract extension, fiscal year 2017, SEC energy management, PG. And we have an extension for Mr. Scannell as a town planner.
On the air, Bill?
Yep.
You stick one of those right on the air?
Yeah.
Be happy to. Yeah, projects like to see a crew to complete in the town.
Okay, John, motion, motion?
I motion, Mr. Chairman, I motion that we extend the contract for 2017 E and P G. Also, town planner, Mr. Scannell.
Second. All right. I'll check that. You have to cover the bill.
Okay.
All right, you go.
Thank you.
Do you hear all set? Okay. Request from our cable access channel 12 and the building respective to authorize the increase in fiscal year 8, this budget 53 and a half cap.
Igor's here.
What you got, Igor?
As you receive a communication that we
Yep, they received the memo, yes.
The memo, so we, only thing I can say, it does not come from any tax base. It kind of is more defined to receiver to the contract. Reason for that is that we, 90% done with the switching from analog to digital and we're waiting for the two pieces of equipment, electronic equipment. Comcast was gonna be here tomorrow, but it canceled on Friday. Soon as we get that equipment, we should be 100% operational. Some of the work then we got for nothing from Comcast, some of them we had to pay. And a lot of them, there's body communications selling that, and that's what we need extra money to switch over. I want to apologize for inconvenience for our viewers. We know there was some problems, and we know there's a problem with audio, and we know there's a problem sometimes, uh, screen freezes a lot. We wait, that's a part, two parts we're waiting for, time corrections, electronic equipment, and one part of videos, which we hope will be installed this Friday. But is anything in electronics? Equipment costs a lot of money, and body communication, we tried to get a cheaper bits, but can't get it, and they charge a very good penny for that at hourly work. This is why, that's why the cost overrun. And next year, I'm gonna recommend it, Dr. Medlin, that we increase the cap, I think from 20,000 to 25,000 dollars, so we don't have to, this is the third year in a row, we're coming for that. And I think we should increase it, we're gonna suggest a request increase to 45, so we don't have to come out and waste your guys' time. Especially if there's enough come from the taxpayers, if it comes from the people who's subscribed, it's not coming.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that everybody is, is very clear, this, this is no cost of the taxpayers at all. This is all right to the cable and Comcast. It's really basically just an increase in the cap that they're allowed to accept. Motion, Mr. Igor.
I make a motion that we
Wait a minute.
Oops, sorry, David.
Hopefully these items are on the agenda for the Finance Committee tomorrow evening?
They both have to, both have to vote on it, except for one.
Okay.
Just putting it over. We'll cover it tomorrow.
Sample, making finding, they're both
Just wait on the, we're gonna do it, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the proposal from WC H dash 12 to authorize the increase in the FY 18 budget, 53 and a half.
All right, David, hi. Okay, we have, is, any good for Gatto, can you talk on that?
No, you handed this to me, so I didn't need to speak to you on this. But this is something that runs into quite a bit, depending on how many programs come in, so.
Have you seen this, John? There you go. So this isn't basically a cost of the town, this is just
It's out of the permit fees.
It's out of the permit fees, right. So he just asked me to raise his cap, just so we did.
He just raised it about a year ago? A few years ago?
Do you have anything to say, David? We want to put it off, but John?
As I went through with Finance, I'm not sure.
Like I say, we've, we've been down this road before. I, I don't think it's coming out of taxpayers, it's just raising a little bit, so. There's no discussion, I will understand, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the increase on monthly payments to the treasurer, 15 to 18,000 dollars.
All right, David, hi. This is, basically, this is generally, this is a cost Okay, this is basically, this is generally, this is a cost of the taxpayers, just raising the cap on the government. Do you have anybody here from parks? No? Well, we have a contract for Ocean State Pyrotechnics. This is for the fireworks on August eighteenth.
This is twenty-eight thousand dollars, for the fireworks themselves.
This is for the fireworks themselves, and I need a motion. This was, you know, past the town meeting, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the invoice from Ocean State Pyrotechnics Incorporated, the amount of two thousand dollars to support the fireworks display.
Second.
All right, David, hi.
Hi.
I'll need you to sign somewhere here, they signed, but they're not supposed to sign, but sign anywhere.
Follow us.
Yeah, please. Is that amount ten thousand? Eight thousand, eight, even?
That's for the fireworks, I think the additional funding was for the B and some extracurricular activities that were happening that day. You're down, isn't it?
Yeah, I already forwarded the paperwork to the state, so I'm just waiting on a response from them.
Right, because your folks got it.
Yeah, yeah, I sent it over to them, so we just, we need a response from the state for them to review the launch site and stuff, but I don't perceive it as a problem, because it's the same as it's been the past, so.
All right, John, year-end appointments.
We just have to ask the council, because we're here for another hour.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the year-end appointments as presented.
Second.
All right, David, hi.
Hi.
Anybody needs a copy of that, they're available in the, our office, just basically, people have to be appointed, sometimes on a yearly basis, sometimes on a weekly basis. It's that time, so anybody wants to list, they're available in the secretary's office.
Treasury warrants and invoices.
Let's go.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept warrant number one oh two for ninety-eight, two ninety-one, and sixteen cents, dated six eleven.
All right, David.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept vendor warrant number one oh three, amount one fifty-seven, seven ninety-three, eighty-two cents.
David, hi.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept warrant number one oh four for payroll for the amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine, sixty-three cents, dated six eighteen.
David, hi.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to accept warrant number one oh five, dated six eighteen, eighteen, for forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
All right, David, hi. David, you got anything?
Uh, two things. We did another option last week, we sold the fire in the highway barn, Grader did that sell, so--
You bought the fire?
Sold. Yeah, it was, what, thirteen hundred?
Yeah, just like thirteen hundred.
Yeah, so.
Thirteen hundred, where did it sit?
Sitting there for years, so.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, hopefully this fall, we'll be able to sponsor those articles for fire and highway to get that money in turn to them, so they can repurpose it and hopefully see fit. Town and I are going to work on the grader, figure out what we want to do with that, but as far as larger equipment, vehicles, per se, those are pretty much an option now, so. And the only other thing is I had a meeting last week with friends of Town Hall, historical, town calendar regarding the town halls and things that are coming up. Pretty positive meeting, only met for about an hour. Some plans down the road, I think we're going to get in front of Capitol, and looking at this window project again and some other things, so hopefully we'll keep it going through the summer and to do something with Town Hall. You know, the improvement on the windows, we approved money for that, for downstairs, and, you know, taping the windows and causing less airflow in there is just not good, so I think we really, I just want to try to get that project moving again and get it going, so. That's all I have, sir.
John, can you go with me? Had enough fun for that, or enough fun for what? Becky, get anything you would like to share? All righty. See you all on July ten.
Yeah, folks.
Safe fourth of July. I need a motion through anger.
Mr. Chairman, a motion for--
You guys? It is, uh, eight thirty-seven.